I'm at six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. And just to note, before we get into our agenda items, we do have a time certain item at seven o'clock, which will then be followed by the next time certain item for the rezonings. If we get through our agenda items that are ahead of that, we may either jump ahead or may take a break, depending on how close we are. But just as a note, we do have that time certain item at seven. And let's go ahead and go to agenda number two, which is public comments. As a reminder, council, we do have, I think, nine comments in Open Town Hall. If you haven't had a chance to look through those, they are mostly, I think, related to items seven, nine, 10, and 11. And we also, as a reminder, received a letter regarding Council agenda number 13 from Joe Coisen. And so I'll summarize that letter when we get to that item. But we're also making sure that every council member has a copy of it, in case you didn't get a chance to look it over via email today. But that will open up for members of the public that wish to speak at this time. All right. And move on to agenda number three, which is staff reports. We'll begin with the administration report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple items from the administrative report. So we've begun our biweekly meetings with Tyler Technologies to get the project going for implementation of our new financial software and payroll software. We're very excited. We're also meeting, oh, yeah, Kyle's not here, I believe, the next meeting, we will meet with someone that's an expert on data, you know, migration. So a lot of the questions we've been kind of writing down about our financial historical data will hopefully be answered at that meeting and subsequent meetings. The financial audit is in progress, as is the, for FY '22, looking back, and then looking forward to FY '24, we're in the midst of Budget and Finance Committee meetings. We have one this week, then we have a break, although the Long Range Financial Planning Committee is meeting, and then we have meetings the rest, scheduled the rest of the month on Thursdays. And then, what else? City Hall. One staff member has moved back. We are waiting on countertops to be installed in both the reception area and the kitchen. And at that point, then renovations will be complete in City Hall. And then, once those countertops are installed, especially up front, then the remaining three employees will move over. We're excited to have this building open to the public again, and for both residents and staff to use. Anything else to highlight from the report? One thing that did not make the report this month, but we will, we will have it on next month, is a update from the legislative session. So there were two bills that would have greatly affected, I would say, the land development code of Sunset Valley that did not pass. So the two, kind of, I would call them the scary bills for Sunset Valley, both did not pass, one relating to minimum lot size and the other relating to ADUs. They did not pass. So that was good news for Sunset Valley. There was a few bills, one relating to ETJs. There's one called the super preemption bill. Jerry and I will be reviewing that. There could be some implications for that bill relating to special use permits and other use, use-related sections of the code. But we'll brief council next month. And we will be doing staff reports July 18, since we will obviously not be meeting on July 4. So I'll take any questions from the admin report.
Any questions for the admin report? I think they're also highlighted in other staff reports, but I will just note that there are a few events that we have coming up that are worth pointing out. One is, on June 17, we're going to be doing the community art mural dedication and unveiling. So that's going to be on Saturday. I believe the time is 10 o'clock, 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning, that morning.
10 to 11:30.
10 to 11:30. And so there'll be a nice celebration, but also, you know, a good chance to socialize and just view the art as it's being presented. We're also, I believe, going to be doing the grand opening of the Violet Crown Trail, that section that's going through Sunset Valley. It's currently scheduled for July 29. That's just a tentative date, in case there's also a backup date the next weekend.
For the rain date, if it, yeah, and so it'll be in the morning.
So it'll be in the morning, and that's, that's going to obviously be a good component for our section of the city, as people utilize the trail and hopefully engage more with some of the, you know, the city facilities that are around the businesses, as well as the future potential Upper Creeks development that we're doing. And then also, just, I think, Chief, you're going to probably point this out, too, but there's a Senior Fraud and Scam Prevention Seminar that you listed, Matt, for July 14, being hosted by the police. So with that, we'll move on to Public Works.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to highlight a few things. So first of all, this week, the summer youth program began. So you're going to see a bunch of teenagers and young people following our public work staff around, doing all kinds of different jobs around the city. They've already completed a couple of different projects. We've had waiting in the wings for a while, like the staining of the pergolas and a few other things here, here and there. So you'll see some of that work happening. So if you see them, just wave to them, say hi. I think they're all excited to be here. To follow up on what the mayor said, the Violet Crown Trail will be happening in the, the ribbon cutting is going to happen at the Ben Garza Inn, because there is a big parking garage over there. So there's plenty of, there's plenty of parking without impacting other things. But I think there'll be stuff going on throughout that area. And then, there is a water service interruption that will be happening this Thursday on this side of town here, as we do a backflow repair. We have to repair one of the big backflows over here. So we have to cut off the water in order for us to do that for, it's supposed to be from 10 to 2. Hopefully, it'll take a lot less time than that. But that is what we're looking at doing. A lot of other, like I said, a lot of projects happening right now, a lot of things getting completed. I'm going to let Dakota give a brief update on the status of the CIP project.
Good evening. I'm sure you guys have noticed that they're still continuing construction on Sunset Trail, that they've finished the drainage on Jones Road. So hopefully contractors should pick up those cones off of Jones Road this, within this week. Right now, on Sunset, they're just working on the service taps and installing fire hydrants. Once they do that, then we can start flushing and getting our back tees and ready for the reconnects of customers. There should only be very small outages for those individuals on Sunset, just to get them tied into the new line. From there, they're going to work on the project on Lone Oak, and they're going to be doing the jumper line from Lone Oak to Curly Mesquite. Overall, it's been going good.
The project's been moving pretty well over there. And if there's any other questions, we'll be glad to answer those.
Mayor Pretim, and then Councilor Rosengard.
So the drainage, I think this is the third time, it was like done, you know, it might be like the 10th time they've done, because Jones has been around a long time. But I think three times since I've lived on Jones. And we just had, like, three gigantic storms come through. How'd it do? Did we?
I did not hear any complaints from those residents who are usually most affected. So I'm hoping that it did well. So I did not hear from the resident who's there at the corner. And usually, I think we would have probably heard something. Did you hear anything else?
Yeah, no, I didn't hear anything. I did notice a little ponding after the fact on certain areas, but that's something we can go in and grind the curb down a little bit, and the water should flow just fine. But it was very minimal.
They opened it up, I'd walk by, they did something, closed back up, and I have no idea. I'm sure they did something.
Yeah. So what happened with that is that the culverts were open on the backside, but not on the front, on the street side. So they opened the street side culvert. So the water from the street will run into the culverts now. So.
Okay. And that's like that farther down here already?
That's, yeah, Sunset and Jones, basically, those culverts right there.
All right. Cool. I'm glad we got, like, instant satisfaction by seeing that. Thank you.
Councilor Rosengard.
I just wanted to say, Carolyn, thank you for all the hard work you did on the engineering reports. That was excellent.
Very much, thanks.
Good summary, good job. Be sure and show this to Public Works.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to touch on that, just because it was something that, it did take a long time, but I think as council reviews it, if you have questions, please reach out to Carolyn if you want a follow-up. We can also, if there's something that comes out of the engineer report that you want us to have specifically brought up as an agenda item or a working session, let's go ahead and plan on that, too. Just, you know, let me know, so that we can get that scheduled. But I really appreciate all the work that went into it. I know, going back that far and looking through all the records, where we don't necessarily have consistent accounting across all the different funds, it's helpful to have that, that detailed history, to let us do some analysis, to determine, you know, if we want to make any changes as far as where we spend our engineering funds.
Yeah, and it also helps us to think of where it is, where we can make improvements over time as well.
Was there any conclusion that you came up with, based on if we had an engineer on staff versus what needs to go to outside services?
I think, based on this, because we have kind of an ebb and flow of projects, I think having an engineer on staff, they, we would still be outsourcing a lot of pieces of engineering as well. So having a firm who may have a little bit more resources to, kind of with the subcontractors and things like that, I think it's actually probably more beneficial to the city over time. So that's kind of where I ended up when I was looking at those things and those numbers. So.
Carolyn, one question I had, because I noticed that we're going to begin the AMI program, anticipating starting that in July for Lone Oak, Sunset, Reese Pillow and Jones. And I'm curious, because I don't know if we talked about this, but just in terms of what will change for those residents in terms of what they may see on, you know, their site or their bills, and just if there's any communication we need to do ahead of time.
Yeah. So once we, we're waiting to get the system set up on the backend right now. So once we get that set up, we'll be sending out base letters to every resident, kind of individualized letters, letting them, helping them to be able to access their part of the website, so that they can see their accounts. From a resident perspective, that's the main thing that they will have see change. They'll be able to actually go to a website, log in, and see their water uses on a daily, hourly basis. They can kind of be able to log in and see that information. They can also, and we'll kind of include this in the letter, they can also set up, like, leak detection notices, so that if they have, if you use, so X number of gallons with every hour for 24 hours, you know, you use more than five gallons every hour, probably overnight, you shouldn't have water flowing through your house. And so it can set up a leak detection that says, hey, we're getting a flow of 5.6 gallons, so you may want to go check your toilets and make sure they're not leaking, or you gotta drip a faucet or something like that. So they'll be able to get that kind of information from the system and set that up. That's the main thing they will see on that. As we bring the entire city on, we are, you know, utility building, and of course, on our end, the meter reading will be much easier, because we won't be going out and reading those individual meters. And so that will make things a lot more streamlined on our end as well. And we are, one of the part of what is happening on the backend is to create that little widget that takes from the AMI system and speaks and transfers it directly into Ncode. And so that's part of, and they've done that before. So it's already kind of, we just need to finish our portion of it. So it should hopefully happen fairly soon, that we can get those letters out and start getting people set up on, I believe it's called Ion Water, is a website that they'll be using to log into their, their, their kind of, you know, landing page for their water system, basically.
Any other questions for Public Works? Moving on to Public Safety.
Good evening. We are, as the mayor mentioned, we have our summer senior financial scams program coming up, July 14. That's going to involve one of our officers, and then there's an investigator from an insurance company that's going to participate as well. Then later on, we're going to do a cybercrime program as well later on this summer. We are still, we haven't got a date yet for our kids' summer crime camp, but we have a business that's willing to furnish t-shirts for us. So we're working on it. And soon enough, I should have a date, probably early to mid-August, before they go back to school. We are still dealing with an increase of repeat offenders that are shoplifting in our stores and kind of trespassing in yards. We still get, we've got a little uptick in people being in backyards and in front porches and things like that. Informally, we've heard from some of the residents of the large camp behind Specs, that they have until next week to begin cleaning out. So I haven't been able to confirm that yet, but if, when that happens, I know when it happened over on William Cannon, we got a pretty good influx of minor problems and trespassing. So we may get a little bit of that this month, as that camp cleans out. We'll be looking for that, and we'll be as prepared as we can to deal with that. I know the stores have gotten a lot better about identifying the repeat offenders that are coming in and calling us before they do something, so that we're able to just trespass instead of having people arrested for stealing. We are also, we've been, since January, we've been writing warnings in the green belt for unrestrained dogs. We've written, I counted 15 warning citations. We're still getting complaints about it. So we're starting this week, we're going to actually write citations for it. So you guys may get some complaints about that. We were kind of reluctant to write citations, because a lot of the people were, well, most of the people were non-residents, and they were coming into the trails from areas where there's no signage. But the complaints are still continuing. So we're going to go ahead and start writing citations for it. Any questions?
Chief, any questions for Public Safety? All right. Well, let's move on to agenda number four, council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent, agenda item number five, number six with revised ordinance, number seven, and number eight.
Does anybody want to pull one of those items? Councilor Yeh?
Did you say number nine or not?
No.
Okay.
Is there a second to approve on consent, number five, six, seven, and eight?
Second.
My councilmember, Medicas. All right. All those in favor approving on consent, items five, six, seven, and eight, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, the minutes from May 16, 2023, regular meeting. Item number six, the approval of an ordinance calling for the regular election of three council members on November 7, 2023, with a revised ordinance. Item number seven, approval of the Sunset Valley Arts Commission to use remaining fiscal year 2022 slash 2023 general funds for two events and a calendar of artists. And item number eight, an award of contracts to Hydrant Rescue LLC for fire hydrant maintenance and inspection pursuant to RFP number 0419203A. All right, council, that'll take us to agenda number nine, consider an act on approval of a resolution directing staff to work with the Board of Adjustment on the finding for a zoning variance. And do we want to start with a staff introduction of this item?
Good evening, councilmembers. Jerry Rustov, Development Services Coordinator. Item nine is a resolution directing the staff to work with the Board of Adjustment, as well as any interested citizens, in looking at considering updating the findings of facts that are necessary for the granting of a zoning variance. The code has 10 findings of fact that the board shall determine are all applicable in determining whether or not to grant a variance. In doing, working on the one case that I've had so far in my time here, in front of the Board of Adjustment, one of the things that came out of that, at least in my opinion, was that several of those findings of fact seem to be somewhat ambiguous, or maybe a little less than clear. You know, an example I could give you is the variance is necessary for the You know, an example I could give you is the variance is necessary for the enjoyment of a substantial property right of the applicant. You know, I mean, I think that that, to me, could be, I understand the intent and purpose of that, but I think it could be better worded. You know, it's hard to argue that a person cannot enjoy their property right unless they get a variance in a lot of situations. So anyway, I know that the council is considering a major code rewrite sometime in the future, but it was pointed out that some of these things, these findings that already exist in the code could probably use a fresh look. So what this resolution would do is it's simply the council telling the staff, work with the Board of Adjustment as well as anyone else who's interested, have some meetings, review the findings and consider whether or not we want to make any changes to those findings. Once we reviewed them and considered possible changes, we would then take it to the Board of Adjustment for a formal vote outside of the informal meeting process that we'd have. Those meetings that we would have with the board to discuss this issue would be noted as public meetings, of course. But once we, once it is determined that, well, these are the proposed changes that would be recommended to the findings of fact, we would then go to the board for a formal vote as well as to the zoning commission for their recommendation. And then finally take the proposed changes back to the city council to see if y'all would like to make those changes to the code. So it's essentially directing the staff and the BOA to take a fresh look at the findings of fact and see if there's any changes that we want to make.
Councilor Rosengard.
Jerry, what I remember is that there were two commission members that asked for this. Is that correct?
There were no commissioners that asked for this.
I thought Tom Seidel brought this up and I could.
I did discuss it with Tom after we came up with the idea to do the resolution.
And I thought he mentioned it in one of the meetings because I was there.
Commissioner Sandy Cox, who's been on it for a while, did at the last meeting, because the findings came up again during discussion of Board of Adjustment processes after the case. And as I recall, Commissioner Cox did say, you know, we've been asking, you know, to have these reviewed for a while. So this isn't, I don't think this is the first, and you know, Jerry's new, but this isn't the first time that the findings have been discussed.
Didn't fit. So now, why are we asking that we approve a resolution? Because usually when council gives direction for staff to work with a commission or a committee, we simply give direction. We don't do a resolution. So why are we doing a resolution? Is it because it's a commission?
I would say, I guess maybe that's a part of me being new here.
Okay.
But that's one, how I'm used to it being done. And two, I think what it does is it kind of puts in writing for everybody, you know what I mean? Exactly what the direction is, you know what I mean? It's the, it's the be resolved part of the, of the resolution. So that was just my attempt, I guess, one, based on what I was used to happening. And then two, to make sure it's really clear what we're directed to do.
So basically, this is what you're used to doing is a resolution would be done when direction is given to a commission?
Yes, given to staff. In this case, it's given to staff to work with the BOA.
To work with, yes.
And I would suggest that that is a best practice because as I said, it lays it out in writing. The whereas is are the why and the be resolved is the go do this part. But I was not aware of how this was done in the past here. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Councilor Young.
I was questioning too, why we needed a resolution for this. Because it seemed like we definitely need to have a process where we review these things periodically, right? I mean, it was the same with finance where we need to look at our financial regulations every so often. But we had, you know, planned a review of the land development code coming up. And it seems like this could have been combined with that as part of the process. My concern here is that certain, the commissions we have, the BOA and the zoning commission, I think we want them to be as free of any real or perceived political pressure as much as possible. And one of the board members in, in, in the letter that she, that she put out alluded to that. And that may or may not be true, but I think we want to avoid that perception as much as possible. And that was kind of concerning to me. I do respect the experience you have and it's fantastic that you are here and have bring this body of knowledge to us. But I think we have to tread carefully on this kind of thing. That was, that was all I wanted to say on this.
Councilor Reitz.
Yes, so I think the last Board of Adjustment meeting was a meeting that I requested. So that is, I believe that was the politicalness that is being referred to. I tried not to make this political. I purposely did not attend the meeting. I purposely did not solicit anything from my neighbors to not make it political. But apparently can't do that. During the meeting, one of the board members says about this very finding, it says, no one can pass that. No one can meet that finding. And so why do we have this finding? And they've known about it for 20 years. 20 years they have been interpreting the finding to make it work. So why don't we just fix it? And that's what this process is about. It's not meant to be political.
And I'll, I'll make a statement saying that originally, I think the request was to have a working session for council to meet and discuss this. And I wanted to avoid that, to avoid the perception of this being a conflict. The resolution was recommendation from staff that is preserving that if council votes on it, it's, you know, council's direction is codified versus council discussing something and then saying, suggesting to the board what the, what the changes should be via our working session. So partially this is to give ourselves the direction or the, you know, the, to the distance from this. The, the way the process will work, if we do go forward with this, even if we don't do a resolution, but we just direct staff, it's intended to go to Board of Adjustments for approval, zoning approval or recommendations, I should say, before coming back to council. I, I think that the reason that we're going through a resolution is just to make sure that that's documented, right? So that we have a clear chain of handoff. So I, again though, this is a new thing, you know, we haven't done this before prior direction staff. However, based on Jerry's previous experience, that's why this is before us. However, we could decide to do something else or table this and come back and revisit it later if we wanted to explore other options. Councilor Rosengard.
I just wanted to ask, on a resolution, as you mentioned earlier, this can go to Board of Adjustments and staff working together. And it could come back that everything on the findings is correct the way you, you have it and that you, you feel that even though you said tonight that it could be worded better, that the majority comes to the conclusion that that's the best wording and nothing changes. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Of course, we hope that if something isn't the best, it can be, we want the best for the city. So let's put all thinking, making more of something than what it is aside. And I move to approve agenda item number nine.
So we have a motion. Is there a second for that motion to?
Yes, I will second.
All right, so then we have a motion to approve the resolution and that opens it up for discussion. Councilmember Medicas.
So I think it's really important that we do have language that's clear and easy to interpret and not up to just different people's viewpoint or discretion. I think it really is hard to decide whether someone can enjoy their property or not. What does that really mean? So I think that's really important. The process is what I'm concerned about. If we set the precedent to start doing resolutions for every change to the land development code, as we get into the land development code and start changing, you know, the whole code, if we're doing revisions over the next year, are we going to be doing resolutions for each action? So that might get a little cumbersome. So that's just my concern.
Mayor Pretten.
So the, the finding was just, can you enjoy your property? That's the one that is kind of like the. So I, I've gone through, I've gone to Board of Adjustments and this is before I was on council or even knew much of anything, but like, I mean, we, ours was passed and there was, I mean, not, not to use this as like one data point, there was someone in that meeting right before us that they also failed. How many times has that been, I'll probably ask Matt and Carolyn, but like, how many times has that been the one that it all hinged on?
I mean, it's very, it's, the vast majority of variances are granted. I would, is that, is that what you're asking?
Well, like, and you said that's not the only one, but that's like the main one. So the one where it's like, you can't enjoy your property, like.
Oh, you're talking about the findings.
Yeah.
So you're, you're saying is there one that's overwhelmingly?
Well, has that one been the linchpin? I mean.
No. Well, well, I actually.
Can you, can you show the findings?
Mayor Pretten, in my, in my opinion, I think that there are several of the findings that could be looked at in terms of the language used, you know what I mean? There's intent and then there's the actual language, right? And sometimes the actual language used is maybe not the best for the intent of what is trying to be done. So I think that we've talked about the example of the enjoyment of property one, but I would say there's kind of them. And I think that they frankly could all use a look to see if they're really the best that they could be.
Do we open our, like, for the ones that have failed? And I'm sure there, there's a lot of smart people in Board of Adjustments and I'm sure they made the right decision. But do we open ourselves up to anything where we change it and then we say, well, this, all of these that failed would have.
No, no, because the board makes a decision, one, it's what we call a quasi judicial decision, right? And so the board makes a decision based upon, one, their judgment.
Yeah.
And then two, what the code says, you know, which would inform, which should inform their decision. And so they made the decision they made at the time that, you know, they made an up or down decision on a variance and it was based upon their judgment, what the code said. So if you change the code, I don't think that that gives anybody the ability to go back and say, hey, now you changed this, give me my variance that I lost five years ago. That's just not possible.
And, and we do want, you know, we want the findings to be clear. You know, we want the land development code to be clear because just as a reminder that because the Board of Adjustment is quasi judicial, that an appeal does not go to city council. It goes to district court and that's in, you know, that's in state law. So, you know, we want, we want the code to be, to be clear, just, you know, and hopefully it never does, but in case it's ever appealed to court.
Now, my, my interaction with any issue with Board of Adjustment, anytime I have heard of people having, and this is Board of Adjustment members having issues with Board of Adjustments is unprepared residents. And I, I talked to Sandy over at Stout House one time and I was talking about how we got this great new schedule of fees for, you know, to kind of take a little bit of work off staff. And she's like, no, that's a bad idea because people are already unprepared for Board of Adjustments and now you're throwing like a meeting fee in front of them and they'll only come more. So I don't know. I, I'm, I'm thinking about this and I think we need to, I, I have no problem with it, but I, I think we need like more, in a city like Sunset Valley, we can actually have more educated residents by the time they get to Board of Adjustments, kind of like, because when we got our carport put in, we're just these two wild odd kids trying to put a carport in and it's like, well, you're built into the setback. We're like, what can we do? And Carolyn's like, you have a heritage, like, that is your hardship. That's where, why you can, and I'm like, oh, okay. Then I filled it in, but I mean, I would have, I would have gone into that thing without that information with like an empty form, like, no, I just want a carport to be like denied. So I, I think, I think we should look at educating people before they go into this meeting as well. And maybe even that first, like, give them one meeting free. I know that sucks for staff, but you know.
We, we don't charge. We don't charge for meetings.
We passed it. What are we doing up here?
We don't charge for it. So yeah, no, we definitely work with residents, you know, if they, if we know they're going on the Board of Adjustment agenda, of course we.
Well, maybe we should lean on them a little bit more to like get in there and just, you know, dot i's and cross t's and everything because like that has been what I've heard. It's just like.
Well, I mean, again, and I, you know, opinion, I differ from many of the board members, but really I, I want staff to be as, I mean, yes, we have to help coach the residents, you know, especially, you know, they're not experts. They're just, you know, trying to build something and enjoy their property. So we do need to help them along the way, but at the same time, you know, it's their application. Staff really, because it's quasi judicial, staff really does need to be removed from it. So there has been, there has been a lot of discussions about, you know, how involved should the staff be? Staff should not be unlike, you know, if, we do not make recommendations for Board of Adjustment like we do for other agenda items for city council or for say even the zoning commission. Because we are really supposed to not be involved in that at all. As I understand, you know, what Jerry's used to, it's, you know, in Austin, it's the application is just kind of passed along to.
Yeah, most importantly.
Staff doesn't even touch it.
Yeah, most importantly, there's lobbying is not allowed, you know? And so, you know, someone can call you about a zoning case as a council member and say, hey, can I take you to lunch, tell you about my case, or can we meet, tell you about my case? Or let's just talk on the phone, tell you about my case. But you can't do that with the Board of Adjustment. The example I give to people so they understand it is, would you ever, if you get a speeding ticket, would you ever call the judge ahead of time and say, hey, come on, you know? You can't do that, you know? And so it's also tougher, I think, you know, to Matt's point, for the applicant sometimes because they are having, it's kind of an all or nothing deal when they're presenting it to the, to the board, right? Like that's their opportunity to make their pitch. And so they don't have that opportunity to lobby and answer questions ahead of time. So it is more important that everybody be on the same page when we are hearing the cases.
Councilor Rosengard.
Could we pull up the findings? Because there's not just one. I know that there's another one that's always, always had me wondering. It's too vague, if you will? Too easy to. Yeah, I can't see it.
Want to make it bigger?
Yeah, make it much bigger.
Yeah, so I could read them out. It's going to take a while. Special circumstances or conditions exist that requiring compliance with the provisions of the applicable zoning provisions of the code will cause significant practical difficulties to the applicant. Pecuniary, this comes up a lot. Pecuniary hardship to the applicant standing alone shall not be deemed to constitute practical hardship, so.
Yeah.
Financial, monetary. Special circumstances or condition affecting a parcel of land such that requiring strict compliance with the provision of this code will require, will result in one or more of the following, depriving the applicant of the reasonable use of his land, significant or unreasonable disruption of the natural terrain or significant or unreasonable destruction of the existing flora. Here we are. The variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right of the applicant. There are no practical, there's no practical alternative to the requisite variance that will alleviate the difficulty of or hardship complained of or the requisite enhances the quality of the project as a whole and would result in a better project than requiring strict compliance with the provisions of this code. The variance will be no greater than the minimum required to alleviate the difficulty or hardship complained of. The granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare or materially injurious to other property or improvements in the area. The granting of the variance will not have the effect of preventing the orderly use of other land in the area in accordance with the provisions of this code. The variance is in harmony with the intent of the code's zoning provision and with the goals, standards and policies of the city's comprehensive plan. The granting of the variance will not cause an unreasonable obstruction of direct sunlight to adjacent property and the proposed variance prescribes only conditions deemed necessary to, to or desirable in the public interest.
So just reading that, there's another one or two that could use some better wording. Thank you.
Councilor Reitz.
So after I, after going through the process, there is no application that you fill out. You write a letter and, and so you reference the findings. And so, you know, what people do is basically they, what I did is you look and what are past letters, you know? And what did they say? And, you know, and I looked at a past meeting, one meeting, they didn't even talk about the findings, you know? And so it's like, okay. And so you are kind of, the process is a bit open-ended and you don't quite know what to do, the best way to do it. is a bit open-ended, and you don't quite know what to do, the best way to do it, and so I do think the process can be improved. The first start, I think, is the findings, make it very clear that people clearly, you know, you can clearly answer it, you know, and I thought I was answering it, you know, does it do this, or no, it doesn't, you know, it's like, but that wasn't enough. So, so if they need more information, that should be maybe in an application or something, I don't know. I don't know what the process should be exactly, but I know it's so open-ended that it does, you know, that's why people are unprepared. It's not because they mean to be, it's because it's unclear, so.
Mayor Potem. So I, I'm going to read into this what I think probably is, what might be going through some people's mind on this, and certainly going through mine, is a little bit of fear. And Jerry, love you, but, you know, we look at what can be done in Austin, and we're just like, I really like Austin, but, you know, like, if, you know, I wonder what the variance, like, whatever comes out of this process, and like what the scary future variances are, do you feel what I'm saying here? It's like, what, what will Sunset Valley look like with a variance process that looks like X? You know, I think it's just like the unknown is like what the, the fear is on there, do you know what I mean?
I think that's a little overkill. And maybe there is some fear, maybe it is, but you would have to trust the board members to make a good decision, you know, and it would, I think it'd actually be helpful to the board member that they don't have to interpret the findings, because that's what they're doing now.
That, that is true, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Councilor Medikas.
So, we've agreed we're gonna update the land development code anyway. It's never, it's never a bad idea to take a look at something that's been standing for 20 years and see whether or not it's effective, or really, you know, too open to interpretation, whether we need an application, maybe that's something we need to do, but taking a look at it, Board of Adjustment, zoning, back to council, there's a long process there, so I don't think it's gonna hurt anything to take a look at it. So I think we should just move forward and just say this is the beginning of our looking at the land development code and start getting it done.
Open up for members of the public that wish to speak, oh, sorry, did you, maybe I saw the comment on staff.
I, I just wanted to, Carolyn wrote me a little note, and just, just to something you said, Councilmember Medikas, yeah, so I think, you know, since this is a specific situation that deals with a specific board and, you know, the findings, that, that's why we're doing this resolution. We, I don't think this is how, how we will proceed with our land development code rewrite, you know, to try to do a resolution to every section, but we will have work sessions and meetings on how we wanna, you know, because we all know this is gonna be a very lengthy process, we're happy to have Jerry on board, but, you know, it's gonna take some time, but we will have to have work sessions to know how to prioritize, like, what sections of, of the code first, so, but yeah, we won't be, you know, going resolution by resolution.
Open up for members of the public that wish to speak at this time?
Thank you, Mayor Council, Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. I want to talk about the piecemeal nature of this, because I, I want to speak from my experience of wasting way, way too much time in these chairs. I, I, maybe 10 or 12 years ago did the last variance, and I said, I never want to do a variance, I never want to do a variance, because it was so onerous to watch all the variances come through, and so, but, but when I built the front of my house again, I wouldn't do a variance. So what happened between then and now was the destruction of our internal process. So what we used to do, and why it worked before, is that, I'm pretty sure Carolyn checks, fact-checked me on this, but when you were here, it was like every Friday, you would go in, you had the opportunity to go in, and staff would, would give this free time to where people could come in and talk about their projects. And I was like, wow, a situation like this in public works, and there was Clay, and there was Katie, and there was the person there, and, and they would just all talk about your project. And so you had that opportunity to just come in and have that, and that got destroyed in staff changing, in, in the turnover. And so you, and so I said, I don't want to have, I, you guys have seen this, I don't want, I don't want to go into that carnage, and they said, Melissa, it's, it's, it's gonna be a piece of cake. Look, you're, you're, you're taking away impervious cover, it's, it's a wash, it's gonna be fine. And it was, but we had people say that, and we lost that. So, so that's how, that was a big piece that we now don't have, and we lost the staff memory of how that worked. And so people would just walk you through, they'd say, this is it, this is reasonable, this is not reasonable, these are the parts you need to pay attention to. And so, and, and we also have to go back to the theory of the findings and the theory of the Sunset Valley codes in general, and as Clay would lecture to me back then, or any number of people would lecture to me, we want to see it, so we have an overly cumbersome code. We, it's, speaking to Rob's point, or Councilmember Johnson's point, is that we were afraid of what might come up, and so we're gonna chew it, and as a certain other board member's wife would say, she says, y'all are gonna pass it, it's just a question about how long you're gonna talk about it. And she would do it with a head shake, you know, it's like, things usually get down, and, and they'll ooch it, but that's kind of how we kept Sunset Valley what we wanted to do. Now, people can agree or not agree, but that's actually a, a community process. There are people who may want to change that process, but if you piecemeal it, then you have a problem. You have to, so I think that the mistake here is saying, let's examine the findings. I think you have to say, let's examine the process, because the findings were integral to the, to the previous process, and I think the previous process was very Sunset Valley-y. And so, that's, that's how I offer that, I say, don't look at the findings only, look at the findings and the process, because you've lost, you've lost the staff support that you used to have, and, and you need to create a little bit more to make the system work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further discussions on this before we take a vote on the motion? All right, so the motion is to approval of a resolution directing staff to work with the Board of Adjustments on the findings for zoning variance. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, and I appreciate the guidance, Jerry, you know, as you go through this process, but, you know, as we, as we mature this, you know, please continue to give us feedback on, as you, as you can, to help us in, in guiding how we handle these things, but I agree, I don't want to do this every time we go through land development code.
I totally understand, that would be, that would make me suicidal. So I don't, you don't, you don't want to do that with, you know, every part of the code, this was just to address a specific issue, and I do think that, you know, when we look at the code, we need to look at it as a whole, and not one thing at a time.
Thank you. So Council, we do have our time-certain item here in 13 minutes, I don't want to start either item number 12 or 13, so why don't we go ahead and take a, oh, sorry, was there-
Oh, I just, I thought Melissa made a good point about the process and that, the discussion about application or no application, so I think that as, as this work is going forward, the process should be something that we look at.
Yeah, and I do, the Council, if I could add real quick, the BOA has looked at the procedures over their meetings very carefully, but I do understand the point I've heard several times here about the, as well as at the last BOA meeting, frankly, about the level of staff support, what would make things easier for applicants and understanding, so I think that we could work on possibly an application packet, or a fact sheet, or some, something, you know, meetings, we're always open to meeting with anybody, but to try to make it easier for applicants to more clearly understand what they need to do as they go into it, I think that we could work on that part.
That'd be great, thank you.
We're on like version seven of our processes document, you know Tom, so, we've got all the processes documented.
Council, do you, we, we actually, I mean, I'm thinking that, we, we have the letter from Mr. Coisen, but I don't think we have any other members of the, the public that have written about this specific item. It may be a short discussion, you know, we can, do you feel like we want to jump ahead to item number 13, or does anybody need a break? Staff, are we prepared to do that? Okay, so let's go ahead and, we're gonna bring forward to item number 13, which is presentation, discussion, and postal action for a future turnaround at the end of Country White Lane in the city's right-of-way to be concurrent with the Country White Lane water pro, waterline project. We'll begin with a staff presentation of this item.
So back in February, we discussed the turnaround kind of issue at the end of Country White Lane. They have, you know, a pretty narrow street, there is no official turnaround, the city did set aside right-of-way area when the city subdivided the Country White Lane property back in, I think it was 2016. So since that time, I've reached out to the property owner at the end of Country White and talked to him, and got an idea of what he's looking for, to try to, you know, reduce the impact of, you know, cars and things like that to that area as well, and we kind of, kind of, uh, come up with a gabian kind of rock wall around the edges and some landscaping to kind of soften that, and to help mitigate lights and noise from the vehicles as they come down. Reached out to Travis County, they did not seem very optimistic about their, you know, willingness or ability to help in that situation, so it, you know, really came back to looking at what are some temporary options that could alleviate some of that issue down there, or not, or if there were any temporary options. The thing is, is that with TCEQ, you know, we're going to be applying, whether we do a temporary thing or we do something more permanent, we're gonna have to get a permit from them, so that's part of that process, and so it's probably best if we go ahead, I think I have the cost, kind of the, basically the design, and it'll change a little bit, because we talked about making the wall a little curved on there, and the cost estimate to build the, the, an actual turnaround with the striping, with the actual like asphalt, is about $112,000. We will probably be using that area for staging when we do the waterline anyhow, so we're gonna be in there kind of disturbing that area a little bit when we do that project. So before we leave that area, we could go in and build the turnaround and kind of help alleviate that. Just the other day, I was driving by, and there was probably 15 cars parked on that road, and this was just like a Wednesday, not like, it wasn't like Friday or anything like that, and, you know, those cars need somewhere to turn around, there's nowhere to turn around on the road. So this is kind of where we're at, looking at this total, to kind of tack it on, if we would, to the Country White, Country White Lane waterline project. I believe I also had a recommendation in here, the Public Works Committee recommended support for this project, so just to give you kind of an overview of what it is.
And Council, we, we also, as you have introduced, a letter from Mr. Coisen, and while, kind of just a brief summary that he was not the person requesting this, it was, you know, his neighbors, however, you know, he is requesting, and I think staff has already been working with him for alleviating some of the impact that this may have by putting up, you know, a barrier, as well as some other, you know, features to make sure that any impact is mitigated. And so that's something that he's requesting, and, you know, we would have the option of evaluating whether we are included in this project if we move forward with it. But with that, I'll open up for Council questions, I think Councilor Young, and then Councilor, oh, Councilor Rosengard first, okay.
So on the turnaround, from what I see you, what you have drawn, the rest of the road would not be paved, just the area that we own with a little bit going into the county?
Yeah, just a little bit, just for the approach to the turnaround, yeah.
Now, we own that whole, let's call it a horseshoe, before you go on to Joe's property, so why can't we turn around right there? Because that's like a hammerhead.
So I know the Public Works Committee, I mean, from a safety perspective, the cul-de-sac is a much safer turn. It, it, it's, it's just a, it's a safety issue. So it's, that's kind of, the first time we discussed this in the Public Works Committee, it came, they, they were like, if we're gonna build it, let's build it right so it's safe. So that's kind of where it ended up. And, and, yeah, I mean, it kind of has that shape, but either way, we'd have to apply for our TCEQ permit, so I think if we're going to build it, it's probably best to build it right and make it a viable turnaround and a safe turnaround.
And I also understand that Travis County won't help us build it, but they could then pave the rest of the road, which is theirs.
Yeah, they can definitely do something on the other side of Country White.
Which would save them money.
Possibly, yes.
Because the asphalt company would be there.
Yeah, and-
Thank you.
Councilor Young.
I just wanted to compliment Carolyn on her management of this whole process, between the folks in the ETJ, Joe, Public Works Committee, and everyone else, this could have been a contentious process, and you made it all work and made everybody happy, and I just wanted to say that you did a really great job on this.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Reese.
Is this all street fund?
We are gonna try to confirm that, but we think we will hopefully be able to do street fund on this.
That's excellent.
Mayor Potem.
Has the, has the fire department looked at this, this shape, and they're cool with it?
Yeah, it's, mostly it's completely compliant with a regular fire department turnaround, it's having to do with the diameter of the cul-de-sac, and it does meet the standards of that, so they should be okay with that, because it has the correct radius for them to turn around.
Except on one side, I, I-
It is a little offset, but for the most part, except for this very one spot, it is pretty much good on, on the fire department end.
Yeah, the, and you're okay with doing all this, what's that cool word that we're using for the-
Gabian.
That was it?
Gabian.
Yeah.
It's basically like, like fence that's made into boxes filled with rocks.
Yeah, and so we're all good with that, right?
Yeah, I think that would be part of, that's kind of why we added some funds in there to cover the rock, the wall, and we're gonna try to curve it and make it a little more aesthetically pleasing than just a straight line.
All right, still wish we could get Travis County to throw in some money.
I tried.
They collect the taxes.
I think that is a good point from Councilor Rosengard, that if we can show that we're doing this, they can essentially-
I'm sure they'll get right on it.
I know. Any further discussion on this before Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve a possible turnaround at the end of Country White Lane.
There's a motion seconded by Councilor Young, right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passes. All right, Council, let's take a quick four-minute break, and then we'll resume with our time-certain item at seven o'clock. break and then we'll resume with our time certain item at seven o'clock. All right. We're gonna pick back up with Agenda Item Number 10 for our time certain item. The public hearing and possible approval of an ordinance amending the zoning classification at sixty-one oh seven Brody Lane from single-family residential to parkland as recommended by the zoning commission. So we'll open the public hearing at seven oh two PM.
Mayor and Council, Jerry Restovin, again, Development Services Coordinator. As you said, Mayor, item ten is to rezone the property at sixty-one oh seven Brody Lane from SF for single-family residential to P, parkland designation, um, under section one fifty point oh sixty-four of the city code. Uh, just a quick history lesson here. Um, in twenty twenty-one, the city purchased the property at sixty-one oh seven using watershed protection funds from the venue tax. Um, this property, I'd like to point out, is, um, a majority of it is within the hundred-year floodplain, and about fifty percent of it's within the, uh, critical water quality zone and fifty percent in the water quality transition zone. Um, in January of this past year, the city council approved the park and open space plan. Uh, this plan specifically recommended, um, some proposed uses for this property for a trailhead connecting to the city's existing trail system, as well as the opportunity of it to use as site for environmental registration, restoration and storm, innovative stormwater management practices. Um, the plan did recommend the rezoning of the property to P Parkland. Um, in March of this past year, the city council passed a resolution directing the staff to initiate the zoning case. We did take the case to the zoning commission, who unanimously recommended approval. And with that, I'm available for any questions. We did receive, I think about four or five written comments, all in support. And last I checked, I think there's a couple more added, but we had about eleven, probably two more added, about fourteen or so, um, electronic comments, all in favor of the rezoning.
Council, any questions for staff as part of the public hearing? And as a reminder, uh, we won't be taking motions during the public hearing. We'll be closing the public hearing and then proceeding with any motions for this item, so. Councilor Rosen Garden?
What if between now and, let's say, tonight it passes, and then, um, I, one of us or somebody brought forward another idea for the use of the house to be moved off the property? Could that still happen, or is that then too late?
Oh, so, yeah, the, I mean, this is just changing the zoning and the land use?
Yes.
So if, yeah, yeah, it turns out, oh, we can haul the house off versus demoing it, that, the, this changes, this, this zoning change would not affect what we could do with the house.
I, I thought so. Thank you.
All right, we'll open it up for members of the public that wish to speak to this item. And, um, Council, just as a reminder, I think we did get additional electronic comments. There were three that I counted in favor of this item and then opposed on open town hall. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, um, at seven oh four PM, and that'll open up for potential action by Council. Councilor Medicas?
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the zoning, uh, commission's recommendation to, um, take sixty-one, sixty-one oh seven Brody Lane from single-family residential to parkland, uh, as recommended.
Mayor Pretten, second? No, second? Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. All right.
All right, one zoning case under my belt. That was my first, that was my first one. May they all be that easy.
All right.
Mayor Council, next case is item eleven. Uh, this is for the rezoning of the property located at thirty-seven Lone Oak, to rezone it from single-family or SF, uh, single-family residential to C Conservation District under, uh, section one fifty point oh sixty-four of the city code.
And Jerry, let me go ahead and open the public hearing before we, because the way we structured this is we have two separate items, so I can, I can open the public hearing for Agenda Item Number Eleven at seven oh six.
First one went so easy, I thought, yeah.
Go ahead, please.
So in two thousand and seven, the city council, uh, the city purchased this property. Um, again, a large portion of it is in the floodplain. About half is in the, uh, critical water quality, uh, zone, and about thirty-five percent is in the water quality transition zone. Um, again, in January of this year, the council passed the park and open space plan. The park and open space plan recommended the use of this property for a small trailhead, um, as well as, uh, innovate, environmental restoration and innovative stormwater management. In March of this year, the city council passed a resolution directing the staff to initiate the zoning case. The zoning commission did recommend unanimous approval of the rezoning of the property to the C Conservation District. I'm available for any questions.
Let me just ask, is your mic on?
I believe it is.
Okay, because you guys don't have a light like we do. And of course, we can hear you because you're in the room, but I remember listening to zoning and your mic was off for a while.
The light is on.
Okay.
Council, any questions for staff on this item? Mayor Pretten?
I, I know I've read the, uh, there's a document that Public Works has about the different levels of improvements that can be made on, so are we gonna have to rip all that stuff out, like the pet station?
No. Uh-uh.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
I'll open up for members of the public that wish to speak to this item. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this at seven oh seven PM, and that'll open up for possible action. Councilor Medicas? Councilmember, Mayor Pretten?
I move we approve an ordinance amending the zoning classification at thirty-seven Lone Oak Trail from single-family residential to conservation as recommended by zoning commission.
Is there a second? I think I saw Councilor Young, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, oh, sorry, Mayor Pretten, you had a discussion?
When are we gonna call, can we stop calling it thirty-seven Lone Oak? I'd be happy if I never have to hear that again.
It's part of the South Hills Conservation. It's the North Hills.
You wanna call it the Fowler, the Fowler property?
What's that?
You wanna call it the Fowler property?
The Fowler property?
Do you know, do you know the history of that name?
I, I also, doesn't it seem like con- conservation should be dark green and parks should be light green? Yeah, sorry.
All right, all those in favor of approving, approving the zoning change, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Um, I want to thank staff for their work on this, especially the zoning commission. Um, you know, the, it's been a multi-year process for a number of these, uh, discussions we've had, and I appreciate all the, the work that staff has done to make sure that we're going through the process and getting everybody's input. All the input we've received to date has been favorable for these, and it was also keyed off of the, having the open space plan, um, process as part of the community input. So, uh, thanks to all the community members that contributed that as well. All right, Council, we have one more agenda item, which is an exciting one. This is, uh, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Presentation Discussion and Possible Action on the schematic design for the trail and amenities at Upper Cougar Creek by Men Collaborative. And I'll start with staff, or do you want to start with men?
I'll, I'll do a brief intro and then I'll hand it off to Carrie to finish up and do the actual presentation. So, um, yeah, this has been a long time. I think we've been talking about Upper Cougar Creek, and here we are, hopefully at a schematic design that we'll then proceed to with construction documents and begin hopefully in early next year to construct a trail. Um, the design, obviously, everything evolves over time, and I think this is going to be a really cool amenity, um, that people can use. And, um, you know, it's something that is beneficial to the shopping centers, to residents, to all the visitors around here. And so it's, I'm gonna let Carrie actually talk about what it is, but, um, I think it's gonna be a really neat design. So, Carrie?
It's on? Now it is, okay.
There you go.
All right. Thank you. And I think you can go to full screen if you go to view. And then, that's right, okay, thank you. Great, thank you, Carolyn, and, and thank you, Council, for having me here tonight to talk about this. Um, I'm excited to present the Sunset Valley Savannah- all's approval and, and input. Next, please. I wanted to first touch on the timeline of where we've been and kind of where we are today and where we're going next in this process. So, um, we've had four months of the schematic design process, starting in February. We've had two rounds of community engagement that I'm going to touch on as part of this presentation. And then at, with all of your approval tonight, we'll move on, um, to a design development, then construction document permitting, and eventually groundbreaking in winter and early spring of twenty twenty-four. Um, and that, all of that will be for phase one of what I'm showing you tonight, and I'll get into a little bit more detail of what that exactly means. But what exactly will be built at that point will be the ADA-accessible multi-use trail, wayfinding, restoration planting, and environmental art along the trail. And then themed, uh, phase two, we'll get in a little bit more detail later. We can go to the next slide. So I wanted to back up and, and kind of make sure we're setting the stage here for where we got to in our final designs. And, um, from what we heard with the, working with the community, we heard that the Sunset Valley should really be a unique destination that brings residents and visitors together to move and play, connecting people to the City of Sunset Valley's commercial district that's right next door, um, connecting to regional trail systems such as the Violet Crown Trail and other outdoor amenities in the City of Sunset Valley. And so we're really looking to connect people to nature, connect to, um, local trails and regional trails, and finish the trail that's coming up from Lower Cougar Creek through the property to connect to Brody Lane and the future Violet Crown Trail, and also connecting people to retail on the western edge of this property. We're also looking to rehabilitate the floodplain with plant communities that improve water quality, support pollinators and wildlife, and really highlighting the unique qualities of, um, Sunset Valley's natural systems and our ecoregion with art, play features along the trail that kind of complements existing play amenities in the area, such as the playground at docks. And so I just wanted to kind of touch briefly on our community engagement process. So our first survey, there's kind of a list there of everything that we heard. In the, in the interest of time, I'm not gonna touch on everything, but those are the things that really came of, um, our first survey. And in response to that first survey, we drew that original, that first concept there, that really had, um, a central playground, a central gathering space, a shade, a shade structure, and a small stage. Um, and then trails that kind of came out from that that connected to Brody Lane there, Silverway. And go to the next slide. We then had another round of survey and a community workshop where we received feedback on our original design and kind of touched on the things that we heard that led us to the next iteration of the design, which is what we're showing to you here tonight. And that's, but, you know, it's, you know, it's basically kind of how it's, yeah, okay, thank you. All right. That's good? Oh, yeah, that sounds so much better, I can hear it. Okay, so after our second survey, we took community concerns in mind and came up with this final design that we're showing you today. From what we heard from that original design, people were really interested in plate planting and habitat, of course, the trail, an overlook to, um, the pond that connects to the commercial structures and environmental art along the path. There were a lot of concerns about the kind of size of the pavilion and the shade structure, having a playground that really lacked parking, that lacked good access, not having a restroom for families bringing their kids to use, and maintenance potentially being a problem at the site. So we took a lot of that into consideration. We scaled back the play features. We removed the more central playground area close to, oh, that was somewhat close to the road, and we put small play features along the path. Um, those will be integrated as part of phase two. Um, and then we're considering working with the city and community members and, and you all to potentially do a similar playground behind City Hall. I know there are some conversations about doing that. So people really liked the playground idea, it just wasn't necessarily the most appropriate location for it. So that's, that's kind of the changes that we made as, made as part of our second survey. And you can go to the next one. Now I'm gonna just get into a little bit of detail about what the path and the amenities itself looks like. This is just kind of an aerial perspective. Some of the, um, feedback that we received on our community survey was it's really hard to visualize from that kind of top-down plan view what exactly it's going to look like. So we kind of took this bird's eye perspective, put in kind of the alignment of the trails, put in, um, uh, some of our features, which include environmental art, tree planting, shade structures, um, and more, that I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail, but that kind of helps you get a sense for what this is going to look like. And so first and foremost, you know, the idea here was to build this ADA-accessible trail loop and really connect the Lower Cougar Creek Trail through the, through the property, um, connect to the playground at docks, and connect to Brody Lane and the future Violet Crown Trail. So I just wanted to kind of show you, the, the red dashed line is really outlining where the primary path will be and where kind of there will be likely, um, bikers using it, runners using it, uh, to, to get from one place to another across the site. And then the red dots are where we're planning on putting wayfinding signage that people will see as they enter the, um, Upper Cougar Creek and enter the Sunset Valley Savannah Trail, how it connects to the rest of the trail system in Sunset Valley. And I think also something to really, um, keep in mind here is that while we're connecting to, uh, the future Violet Crown Trail, we really want people to see when they're at that intersection, that this is separate from that trail. This is a special place, this is Sunset Valley, it's not part of that trail. So we're making sure that we're putting some sort of entry signage at Brody and the entry of the trail at those two points, so that people will get a sense of what Sunset Valley is all about, and they'll be able to enter from that location. Um, and then it's a little hard to see here, but we've, we've also been talking to the civil engineers about some ideas for having an off kind of road crossing at Brody. Um, so right now, along Brody, when you cross Upper Cougar Creek, it's a very narrow sidewalk. So we're considering having either a pedestrian bridge that's going to be right alongside, parallel to the road, so you can kind of come off of Brody, off the sidewalk, cross, and then reconnect to Brody, so that, you know, especially if the Violet Crown Trail alignment is right there, it won't be quite as tight if you're, you know, running or walking next to, um, a bicyclist or something like that. So that's a little bit to be determined. You'll see it in this design, it's just a dashed line. Just know that we're considering that connection and figuring out how we can get kind of people safely across that location. Just one more thing on that slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about- I wanted to talk a little bit about materials. What we're proposing and what we heard is important from community members is that in the floodplain, and just as a reminder, about, I think, a little over 70% of this property is in the floodplain, we're gonna want to use a pervious material. So what we're recommending for the material of the ADA accessible path in the floodplain is a pervious concrete. And we're talking to some vendors about what exactly that looks like and trying to get the, the best price possible there. But we think it's important to use that at this point because it's pervious, water can flow through it, it will maintain water quality throughout the, the area. But then, once you're out of the floodplain, the rest of the paths can just be the kind of typical decomposed granite trail that's kind of the classic look throughout Sunset Valley. And then we organized the kind of Sunset Valley Trail Experience around five theme areas that were selected based on their location and the natural areas that they kind of exist within along the trail. And so we can kind of go to the next one here and I'll, I'll talk about each, each of those in a little bit of detail. So at the kind of intersection of the trail and Brody Lane on the north side, we have what we're calling the Shady Elm Grove along the trail. And that's kind of a quiet, contemplative, shady area. There's already a lot of existing cedar elms there that you can kind of sit underneath. It's surprisingly quiet considering it's, it's close to Brody. We're thinking about integrating seating, some environmental art, some nest boxes for, for songbirds and things like that. And I also want to note here, we're talking a lot about art in this presentation and a lot, you know, nothing has been decided on. We're talking to some environmental artists, one of whom lives here in Sunset Valley, which is really exciting. So all of these are just ideas at this point, kind of placeholders for what could be, you know, working with artists, working with the community. We can go to the next slide, please. And here is just where it's located in that kind of bird's eye perspective. You can see a little image of a, a guy sitting on a bench underneath some trees. There's some lighting or art in the trees right there. All right. The next one we have is the Habitat Trail. And this is really kind of a environmental education and pollinator habitat aspect of the trail that you can walk through. We're going to have some shade sales with seating underneath. This area is outside of the floodplain, so we're able to do that. Again, we're having some songbird nesting boxes, some tree enclosures that could be somewhat artistic to provide a safe place for new trees to grow up. There are a lot of mesquites in this area. Those will eventually kind of age out, and so we're thinking about the next generation of trees for that location and how we can support their growth. And then providing some small play features in this area that kind of are kind of a nod to habitat. So having some birds' nests that people could sit in, that kids could play in. This is an example from the Lady Bridgerton Wildflower Center. Or some spider web climbing areas that kids could play on, and then some insect shelter boxes, and then some environmental art signage so people can kind of read about the natural life and habitat and wildlife of Sunset Valley. That's where it's located on this aerial here, kind of up, up by Brody Lane and close to La Madeline. And then where we formerly had the kind of playground, gathering space, shade structure, we really sized that down to just kind of become a small gathering space with picnic benches, seating, shade sales, potentially a bird structure or other kind of sculpture that kids could play on, and then a refill station for water, oh no, and bike racks. We kind of lost the connection there. But some bike racks and a water fountain station there. And then that, all of this will be kind of surrounded by the wild, like, natural wildflowers that are already there. I was just there on site last week and it's just really incredibly beautiful. So having a little bit of a light touch in that location, but providing a place for people to kind of sit and rest, eat a sandwich, things like that. And then we did get a fair amount of comments in our surveys that there really weren't activities for adults in this location. So we're proposing putting in some kind of standing exercise equipment in this location, something probably pretty low profile and natural, using wood as a material, but places where people can do pull-ups or setups, things like that alongside of the trail. That's just where it'll be located. And then really the heart of the trail here is what we're calling the Environmental Art Loop. It's pretty much all within the floodplain, and we're providing some environmental art structures that can also serve as kind of environmental restoration opportunities. So what we're proposing for actually kind of in the creek itself is using a material similar to the Gabian wall, which is what you, y'all had discussed earlier. What you can do is kind of put that within the floodplain and put that within the creek and kind of create little micro environments for different types of plants to thrive, and those can be artistic, too. So thinking about how we can integrate environmental art with that restoration, have those kind of fold in within one another, having signage, having some seating, and then providing what we're calling a limestone scramble, which is a way to get across Upper Cougar Creek when the water is low or even high, kind of to splash across on little stones as an additional crossing, as a fun way to get across. That's kind of showing what some of the features could look like, stump jumps for kids to jump on, and then some, some art installations that could also provide some environmental features as well. And then something that was kind of not, not necessarily in our scope, but what we'd like to make recommendations for is a little bit of improvements at the docks playground and what we're calling the Heritage Oaks, which are these beautiful oak trees that are right next to the playground at docks. And that would really be some small improvements to improve the playground there. We heard a lot of feedback when we had our initial playground of like, hey, you know, there's already a playground, why don't you just make that better? So we, we took that in mind and we're making recommendations to have some small updates there. That will probably be in future phases, but we wanted to get it on y'all's radar. And then I'll let you all review that. I know it's, this is, the rest of this is part of your packet. This is some information about plant communities. If you want to get nerdy about that, we can talk more about it, but I thought we would just page through it in, in the interest of time here, but really focusing on, you know, native species, restoration, a light touch when it comes to removing invasive species because a lot of it can be pretty, kind of degrading to the site to use a lot of herbicides and pesticides and really rip things up. So being very targeted with the removal of invasive species and, and, but also, you know, making sure we're removing harmful ones and putting in new, new native species. Okay? And then what we're, what I want to show here, and this is important because this is what we're going to be moving forward with in our next phase. Phase one is the ADA Loop. So basically, all the path that you see there on the left, on the left side, the tree planting, the restoration planting, the environmental art features, the rock scramble, some of the limestone seating around the path, and wayfinding signage. And then phase two, on the right side there, includes additional environmental art, the future creek crossing at Brody, whether that's a bridge or extending the culvert, that's kind of to be determined, the gathering space, the raised crosswalks that will connect to the shopping centers and also connect to Lower Cougar Creek, the play features, the pond overlook, and then potentially, if desired, parking at that, at this location. Next one, please. And then the opinion of probable construction cost for phase one. I just want to make sure, I can't quite see that, so I want to make sure I'm saying the right number here. So for all of that, it's about $740,000. And then we kind of called out what would be used from the venue tax and hot funds. So subtracting what we can use that, that those funds for, it came out to about $610,000. But there are kind of some options that we are also presenting here. If you go to phase one, alt one, this would be if we substituted stabilized decomposed granite instead of the porous paving. Now, there are some trade-offs here. It does have a cost savings, but in our, in our conversations with Carolyn, she has noted that there will be maintenance required for that, you know, even if it is stabilized, it, it comes apart, who knows how long it's going to last. So there's a trade-off there in terms of the, in terms of the cost. But all in all, the general fund needs for that one would be $508,000. And then phase one, alt two, would be if we did phase one and we did not add the connection to docks, so we're kind of cutting down on the amount of path that we're building, the subtotal, and I'm gonna subtract out the, what could be used venue tax and hot funds, the subtotal for that would be about $472,000. So those are some options that we have, you know, we're still kind of honing in on materials and things like that, but we wanted to be, present some options for you all. And next slide, please. Okay. And that's it. So happy to take any, yeah, questions.
Can you come to my backyard?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, we would love to.
So, couple of questions. Let's go back to my notes. Okay. Let me throw the venue tax. Okay, the main thing is that the venue tax, we can use $129,000 and the rest would all come from the general fund. And on limestone crossings of the Upper Cougar Creek, I made a note on that, and I made a note on B, connect to La Madeline's. So on B, you didn't mention anything about connecting to any retail except for docks. What about La Madeline's?
So, well, we, we are proposing two crosswalks, one that will go kind of across the street to the retail, you know, in the southwest corner. And then La Madeline's, you know, we do have that, we do have that connection just by virtue of having, you could just go to a site plan. Oh, actually, this works. This works. If you could go back, yeah, to the...
Go to B.
So there is, I mean, there is this sidewalk here, and it's funny that you bring that up because we were just there last week, and there, there's a fence right here that we could take this out, or they could take it out, I think it's theirs, and we could add a connection here if they're a little too lit. They kind of have like a little gathering space right here already. So I could see that, the conversations with them, maybe it might be a map or something like that.
Okay. And limestone crossings of Upper Cougar Creek, what I worry about there is if there is water on those limestone crossings and somebody slipped and hurt themselves. So is it possible between two trees, putting rope so they can at least hold on to the rope as they're crossing the limestone boulders?
Oh, that's interesting.
They do that in River Place.
That is interesting. I wonder, I wonder if, if the water gets really high, that might get knocked down, but we can look into it. River Place, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. I haven't heard of that before, but we can look into it.
And then from phase one, which costs $740,000, to phase one, alt one, we're saving $100,000. And then from phase one, alt one, to phase one, alt two, we'd save $36,000. I would not be in favor of phase one, alt two, which means not connecting to the retail. That's the whole purpose, is to connect to the retail.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
Consular reads?
Couple of comments. One is, I love the fact that y'all listen to feedback. I mean, I think that is so important, and it's not an easy thing to do, particularly, and you have to kind of distinguish feedback because you'll get some positive feedback and you'll get negative feedback. And you've got to make those determinations, but y'all listened and you revised, and I think kudos to you guys. I think that's outstanding. I love the zones. I love those zones. I love the fact, you know, my kids would have absolutely loved walking along, you go to different zones, you play on this, and you go somewhere else, walk some more, then you play on this, and the adults have something to do, there's the educational opportunities. I just, I love that. I think that is fabulous. I would really play up the educational part, maybe with some QR codes that you can click on, and then you can learn all about things. I actually envisioned something like, you know, it'd be kind of fun, it's like a coloring book that Sunset Valley could put out and, you know, that kids, we, they could purchase and they can, you know, learn about birds, the wildlife, water quality, conservation, all sorts of things. And it could be a very fun, but educational, and, and educational about our values. So I think that is fabulous. There is a little payback equation we can kind of use. We used to spend about $100,000 every year just on advertising our name, Sunset Valley. I think if this park had the name Sunset Valley in it, you know, we wouldn't need to, you know, there wouldn't be a need to be advertising and spending that $100,000. And that brings me to the name. I like the name. I like the fact that I think the name, whatever it is, should have Sunset Valley. If it's the park at Sunset Valley, if it's Sunset Valley Savannah Park, or whatever it is, and maybe that's something that our residents could vote on, we can give some choices, you know, and they can vote, what do they like the best, et cetera. But I think it just has to have our name on it and just for our branding purposes. I think that's it. I think this is outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consular Medicas?
No. You are ahead of me.
Oh, so thank you for all the hard work on this and making all the adjustments and the great community input that we had on this. It was, is really phenomenal. The, the thing, first, I agree, I love the idea of QR codes with the educational stuff as you walk through, so that's really, I love that idea. And I also agree we should have Sunset Valley in the name. I worked for a national organization and we tried to brand something without using our name, and it was a major national failure, and we went back to using our name. So I think it's really important. Also, there was a question I had about the docks where you had the wayfinding signs, and I was wondering, I didn't see one where you enter, like where you would come across from Lower Cougar Creek.
Okay.
So I think one there would be really good for anybody walking across that, the street into that.
Yeah.
And then I really want us to think about doing this the way that will be the least amount of labor on our staff. So I'd hate to see us go cheap because it's less than the porous concrete. The porous concrete we've had on the Lower Cougar Creek Trail, for a long time, it's a lot less maintenance, and so I think we need to do it so that it's not going to be a burden to maintain over time, and it'll save us money in the long run. So I'm in favor of, of using that method.
Okay. Thank you.
Do Consular Young and then Mayor Verden.
Consular Medicas has, has said what I was gonna say, and as always, has said it better. But I was also gonna say that, and Carolyn, you may want to weigh in on this, that substituting decomposed granite for pervious concrete saves us $81,000 immediately. But does it save us money over time in terms of maintenance?
No. No, it will not save us money over time because granite gravel is generally gonna have more maintenance. We're gonna have weed control, there's other things that will come into con, into play with that generally. And, and, yeah, I don't think there's any real ecological difference between the two when you put them down.
Okay. And I also wanted to say, a wonderful process and a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Verden?
Thank you. I really, I kind of like lighter touch for everybody again. For the surveys, how many people were forming?
I think that's the first time in three years. I forgot to do that. So I'll get it on record. Good job. Love the light touch. It's beautiful. For the, for community outreach, how many people from the Villas were kind of like involved and just, you know, it's, I know we're a whole community, but I try to sometimes let the people that are closer to it... let the people that are closer to it help.
Yeah, you know, we didn't specifically ask, you know, where people lived. Yeah, that might be a good idea for future endeavors, future, like, project designs. In the past, like, we don't like to ask people addresses, but we can kind of say, like, what zone do you live in, and people will say, okay, I'm in Zone One, you know, this neighborhood. So, we didn't at this, part of this process, but I think that's a good idea for future.
Yeah. Now, this is just me, and I'll probably be proven incorrect, like, immediately, but I feel like this is so tasteful and so kind of like nature-y, that like, it'd be, I'll listen to people's feedback, but it's going to be, and I think a lot of people can kind of find something good here. The, do we, do we know how many weddings the homestead has?
I do, I'm assuming they have quite a few, but I do not know exactly how many they have, and I think it'll be a benefit to them as well.
Yeah, I, you know, I know they can kind of go out and around, kind of like the, and I don't know if that wall is a, or if that's just something they want, or if that's a TABC, or I don't know what, but like, if they were interested in kind of like busting a hole in that wall, because I, I mean, this would be a great place for like, doing photos at the weddings and stuff.
Yeah, actually, my colleague Michelle was there with, like, playing at docks with her kid, and saw people taking pictures there, which is really funny.
It's a lot of space, it's already really beautiful, so, the, right, I'm super psyched about the, the bridge, and I know that's like a, I think, that's going to be another project, but right underneath there, there is just like this concrete section that's just always filled with trash.
Mm-hmm.
So, the trash is going to end up somewhere, I think, you know, the number of sources comes in, but are you going to break up that, is the plan to break up that concrete, or that's just going to chill out there?
Not at this point. I think, you know, we've thought about that, too. That would need a conversation with the civil engineers.
Yeah, so that's part of that, like hazmat and catchment basin for Brody Lane, and so we can't take it out. But one of the discussions we've had with the engineers is that, instead of a bridge, it may be possible to extend the culvert and have more of a land bridge, and create more linked land surface there, versus just a, you know, a cross ridge, which will then cover up a good portion of the concrete, and take, you won't see it in the same way.
I thought the bridge was fun.
Well, bridges are fun, but yeah, there's some other options there to kind of address that. Yeah, we have talked a little bit about the concrete area, but that's part of the water quality structure for the road.
Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, the connections of La Madeline is, as Rudy mentioned, and like you said, they already have, it almost feels like an employee seating area, because it's just like kind of off to the side, and...
Yeah, yeah. But I definitely think there could be a connection there, easily, if they're okay with taking down the fence.
I wish they could turn that entire building and face, it would be, it would be so awesome if it was just like, this is our front yard.
Right.
Sorry, the raised, the ray, and Chief is no longer, over there. Are we already doing raised crosswalks?
Crosswalks, the two raised crosswalks, the one that links Upper Cougar Creek and Lower Cougar Creek, as well as the one near, I think, the Villas, are part of the ERW project we're looking at right now.
All right.
There is an option for a third crosswalk that is closer to the shopping center. We haven't put that one in quite yet, that could go as another phase, yeah. That would probably be another phase if we wanted to look at that, when we do like Phase Two, kind of adding that one in.
So, was there money in there for those?
Um, no.
No, they're part of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
And they'll be part of the street fund project.
I thought we found someone, oh, okay, yeah, cool. The pervious concrete as well, it's like a no-brainer, and I love that. I kind of wish we did it between, we call it the secret way, where it connects kind of like your end of the, of the meadows there to Lower Cougar Creek, I wish, but I actually really like those, those leaf imprints that they did in there, so never mind. How we got to 426 grand on that ADA loop is, all right, but besides that, awesome job, really digging it.
Other comments from council before opening up for public comments? Councillor Rosecard?
I just want to say the detail was excellent, whereas you took each little area, and you had numbers on each area, and then you tied it over as to what it is and explained it, and then you did a big blow-up of it, and I thought, wow, that's excellent. So, thank you.
Good, thank you, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and open up for members of the public that wish to speak.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. I agree with everything that was said, you know, and it's been said at lots of meetings, so I know that there's a lot of public that has said everything that council has said in the various meetings that I've been to, so I think that's wonderful. The only thing that I haven't heard said yet is, is I would hope for considering mile markers. I have a runner in the family, it didn't me, but I walk, and I think that it is, with the, there needs to be a place for adults to run, in a, you know, in a sort of a safe place for those people, unlike perhaps Councilmember Johnson and the mayor who run five miles on a regular basis, for people who run a little less, you know, it would be nice to have a track kind of thing, for people who don't run quite as much, and, you know, then you go, yay, I did a mile, you know, for those kinds of people. And there's a lot of, or the ones who aren't running and just walking it, who are older and there's the benches there. But I think that that would be an ideal place for something like that. I've been looking in the city for where we could put that, the Uplands might work, but we haven't decided, but you could do like an alternate little thing that's a little bit more runny, and just put little colors for the running track, certainly, just very small modifications would make that work, I think, and it would be, it would be a fun place to run, for someone of my stature who isn't going to run very far. So, that's, I think that's just a thing to consider, and I think, I've been a big fan of the QR codes and the educational piece, but I think also just, for people who are just really literally counting miles, you know, little things and benches, and I have heard a lot of the older people, you know, want to have those benches along those places, so I've done my quarter-mile, now I have a bench, you know, and that's like part of the way we look at it. And color coding those trails, so you can, so you have that there, it's like, you want to run, here you are, you want to walk, here you are, and you want to educational, here's the thing. So, that's just, that's just the only thing I haven't heard pulled out, but excellent work. Thank you so much, and thanks to council for all the good comments.
Mayor Pretten, did you have another comment?
So, the ERW work, we're, we're going to continue the, that, the sidewalk, where the sidewalk ends, you know, we're going to, it looks like in here that it's going to maybe connect.
Yeah, it's going to connect over from the ERW water quality pond down into the creek. There's already an area where there's almost like a low-water crossing in the creek, I think it goes through that area, and then back up to ERW.
Oh, maybe, I'm actually looking in the wrong spot, so are we going to remove, so on the north side of ERW, are we going to get rid of the sidewalk that kind of just randomly ends?
Yeah, any sidewalk that just, actually, because in Phase Two, it's going to reconnect all of that together. So, yeah, it'll all, it'll all connect back together. That little section, that weird piece of sidewalk will be connected together.
Does that show in here?
The Phase Two map, go down, go up, actually. Down, yeah. See Phase Two, there's, there's, right there, it connects back to that sidewalk. So...
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to go up and play.
And that could be an area that we consider going ahead and adding to Phase One, if that's something you're interested in connecting.
This is being removed, you're going to be able to, yeah.
Yeah, anything that, yeah. It'll go away.
There's no plan to kind of connect that with the ERW, you were?
No, that's, it'd have to come out, it'd have...
I'm happy that it's going to be gone.
Yeah, no, it's going to be gone, it's going to be a better option that way.
Yeah.
Nice to walk.
But we're not like, we're not paying for a sidewalk?
No.
That's going to get removed, okay. And how long is the loop? Do we know?
I don't know.
Okay.
So, I thought that was part of Phase One, that piece that comes up from Lower Cougar Creek? That's where that concrete is, that little pad that goes to the water thing, or whatever that is there?
So, here's the ERW water quality pond right here, and so the crossing for Lower Cougar Creek to Upper Cougar Creek is right here.
Right, but isn't that part of Phase One?
This is Phase One, yes.
Okay.
That's Phase One.
And then, I want to make sure that the connection to docks is part of Phase One, too, right?
Yes, that's right there.
Okay. So, that sidewalk will, you won't be on the sidewalk, you'll go down the path and come back around, right?
Come back around, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? Mayor Pretten?
This could be, it's, you know, we have that engineering cost report, or the report that you did, this might be, '24 might be like one of the highest years we've had in a decade or something, if this was in there, right?
Well, construction, well, construction-wise, it might be, because, I mean, we'll have this project, we'll have the ERW and Home Depot project, and so they're, and countrywide, so there's going to be a lot of activity around the city in FY '24. Now, good news is, after that, it kind of peters out for a little bit, and then we'll be back up.
Oh, no, I, I'm happy that we're kind of like putting some of this money into, into action here, so, but I think it's going to blow that average out of the water.
It might, especially with Reimagine Brody also coming on next year as well, so.
So, Counsel, I'm very excited about this project, I really like the design, I appreciate all the work that's been put into this and gathered from the community. So, Councillor Reitz and Councillor Medikas, thank you for working together on shaping the input and working with men, collaborative, and staff as sponsors of this item, and I think you should be proud, you know, in terms of where we started, I think, three years ago, Councillor Reitz, when this is first, you know, maybe four years ago now, you know, it's been a while since we've talked about Upper Cougar Creek, and I think we've landed in a place that, you know, a good compromise between all the values that we've had input over that time. I'm very excited about this, and can't wait to get started on it. So, council, we do have potential action that we can take, if we want to make a recommendation for a specific, you know, implementation, whether it's the Phase One, the Phase One Alt One, or Phase One Alt Two, I think is presented, or if there's other things that we want to consider, but I think what I've heard is that generally the Phase One is the preferred one, where we have the pervious concrete as part of the floodplain development. So, I'll, I think, we'll let, Councillor Reitz, any comments if you want to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the construction of the Phase One Upper Cougar Creek Trail and all of the, with all of the modifications that were presented tonight.
Second?
Second. Opens up for discussion, Councillor Rosecard, did you want to raise a comment?
Yes, I wanted to say something, and now I'm baffled, can't remember. Somebody else go, I'm sure it'll come back.
Mayor Pretten?
The, even what I said about the, you know, going to the residents and the Villas and seeing how they like it, I'm always a big proponent of just kind of getting things in front of people, like the lighter touch and seeing that they're cool with it. I think Phase One is great, and I'm sure they'll even be hungry for the things in Phase Two once they, once they see it. So, I'm really excited for Phase One there.
Councillor Rosecard?
The 11-foot pervious concrete, I really like that idea, because that way more people can cross, come in and go in at the same time without getting down, you know, getting off the sidewalk and so on, so thank you for that, that was a great idea.
So, council, the motion is to approve, I think, the schematic design for the trail in Menues at Upper Cougar Creek, Phase One, with the additional discussion items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, thank you all so much, I'm very excited about this and looking forward to the next steps in the design process and...
Thank you, Carrie.
And thanks to staff for all the work in getting all, coordinating that, so. So, council, we are done with our agenda, so if we can take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Councillor Young, all those in favor, say aye.